It's 11:00 AM. We're here for the Assembly Enterprise Utility Oversight Committee of the whole regular meeting for November 16th. We are scheduled to run from 11:00 AM to 12:00 PM. So with the meeting called to order, I think we'll start with member introductions. I think I'll just read through the list of assembly members present. I see we have myself, Kevin Cross, George Martinez, and Scott Myers. And then I, for members here to present, if you just want to quickly introduce yourselves, or you know, actually, let's just do it as each item comes up. So unless anybody has a problem with that, I think we'll just go ahead and jump into new business. We have a very packed agenda today. So really want to try and keep things moving along. Again, as Desiree pointed out, the chat is not recorded. So if you have a question or need to get in the queue, raise your hand and we will call on you. And I will ask that for each topic. We try to limit ourselves to eight or nine minutes, which unfortunately means we may not be able to take as many questions as people would like. But if there's extra time at the end, we'll circle back to it. And finally, before we get started, I'll just say if anyone is here for audience participation, please just put something in the chat. So I'm aware of your presence and desire, and I'll make sure we set aside some some time at the end for you. But if I don't see anything there, then I think we'll just go right up to 12:00 PM. So with that, Mr. Ruffo, the Ship Creek Small Boat Launch, take it away, please.
Okay, good morning. Steve Ruffo, I'm the director here at the port. And this is a follow-up to the email that I sent out to the assembly members about a month or so ago regarding the port's intentions for how to deal with the Ship Creek Boat Launch starting in fiscal year 24. So I'm going to share my screen, and I've got some slides that I will go through. If y'all could please tell me when, if you can see the, see the slides.
We got it now, Steve.
All right, then I'll turn my camera off because lord knows that creates a ton of bandwidth challenges. Okay. So in the email that I had sent to all of you, I hit the high points here. First thing everybody's got to appreciate is, there was a 35-year lease arrangement between the municipality of Anchorage and the Alaska Railroad for a wide variety of parcels of land along Ship Creek and up into Kinnick Arm. The particular one in question here is the one that talks about responsibility for oversight and maintenance of that area that we all call the Ship Creek Small Boat Launch. That was a 35-year lease. It started in September of 1987 and expired in August of 2022. So at the very base of this whole argument is the fact that the city no longer has a lease agreement with the railroad to do anything at Ship Creek. And, and the port views this as an opportunity to back off of what has been a long time responsibility over for us down there, and a rather costly one, for sure. For example, on the costs, when I started at the port 16 years ago, and we were doing the Ship Creek Boat Launch, it cost about $30,000 to dredge it every year. And we dredge it once at the start of the season, put the floats in the water, and let it go for the remainder of the season. That cost is now upwards between 90 and $120,000, depending upon how the bids come in. So I picked an average of about $100,000 to do exactly the same thing to get the place open for business. And when we say open for business, we're talking about a user group population that amounts to approximately 700 every season. You know, we have the, have the luxury in a couple of years, the latest one being 2022, where somebody was down there doing something else that they needed a counter for. So we asked them if they could do, if they could do a counting of the use of the boat launch for us, and they graciously accommodated at no cost, and gave us the numbers at the end of the season. And they averaged again about 710, 715 launches, and about 700 to 705 recoveries. Interesting why that's the case, but that is in fact how it came out with. So we're picking 700 as the number of times the boat launch has been used in a particular season. But we also mean that that's not 700 eaches. That's 700 times somebody put in a boat in the water and recovered it. And we do know it gets quite a bit of use from the local Sett Knitters Association, which means that there's at least a small group that is repeating the use of the place more than once in a season. And how many times? I don't know. But I do know that it is more than once. We don't have anything in our tariff with respect to collecting launch fees down there. But we have put in place, and it's been about 10 years now, we put in place an honor box and asked for people to, on an honor system, give us $5 in an envelope. We even had envelopes printed up, and the envelopes are available there. Pay us, could you pay us $5 for the use of the fee, for the use of boat lunch every time you use it? That number that you see there is again what an annual average has been that we've collected. So we collect about $1,320. And if you do the algebra, that's not $5 a launch. That's $1.90 that we've collected every launch. So we know that there are people not paying anything at all. And I can make it even worse, because if you subtract out $1,000 of that, that there's $1,000 that we've gotten for the last, I think, five or seven years from the Sett Knitters Association. They'll write us a check at the beginning of the season for what they believe was covering the cost of all of their users to use the boat launch. They pay this once, and whenever the Sett Knitters come and use the place, and remember, that's probably the group that's the repeat users, it's not costing them anything. They have no obligation in their minds to pay anything because the association has given us a check for $1,000. So how's the place been paid for? Because we've had to cover not only the cost of that $100,000, but we've had repairs that had to get done. The cost is being paid for out of the port's budget, and the port's budget is not tax dollars. It's port user fees. So in essence, the port users have been covering the cost of the maintenance work and the repair work at the Ship Creek Small Boat Launch. And for me, that's a, you know, that's a concern. That's not why the users pay the tariff rates we levy on them. They pay that for our ability to maintain the existing port that they use, not to pay for that, you know, not to pay for this facility that is off the port and of no value to them. But if I wanted to set a use rate down at the port that would cover the expenses, it would have to be approximately $143 just to cover the dredging. But we have deferred a lot of major maintenance that's been required down there for a couple years. And it's, it now amounts to a number that is north of the $4 million that we see, that we see here now. So what I thought I would do is, here's the last time we put together an estimate of what would have to go into repairing and making safe again, the Ship Creek Small Boat Launch. It's not totally unsafe or dangerous, but it is fast approaching that condition. And this is what we would have to invest in at least one construction season to, to make the place whole again, and let everybody feel comfortable that there's no risk involved in launching a ship, launching a small boat from there. And you can see that there's a 30% contingency added there. If you take out the contingency, it's still about $4.3 million, which is a sizable investment that once again would have to come out of the port's budget to pay for, because the launch fees provide nothing to offset anything that's sizable. So for those of you who have never been there, I thought I'd throw a few pictures in here so you can appreciate what it is we're talking about. This is, this is the Ship Creek Small Boat Launch. We are looking east, southeast, into the shore from, from the water. We, we take these with a drone. We send the drone out there every year to take a look at the exterior and, and see, you know, what it is we can't see with our eyeballs that might need work. But you'll also notice that there's no water in it. There's no water in the place 12 hours out of every day because of the tide structure up here. So what comes into question to me is, who in their right mind wants to put a, puts a boat launch in a place where there's no water in it twice, half a day every day? But as an aside, but this is, you know, this is what it looks like. So you can get an idea of what the structure of the facility is. Zooming in on some of what needs to be repaired, you can see the amount of damage that the winter ice does to it every year. It's tearing up that which was the surface that people backed down with their boats to get them in the water. And there's, and there's those blocks that create this, you know, the sides, so that there's no erosion that puts, that puts mud in the water over there. They're called ACBs, articulated concrete blocks. And you can see a sizable number of them have been plucked away and taken away by the ice and the, and the tides. Another look at them, the amount of damage that's done there. You see these funny patches of, of concrete in there. Those are the patchwork repairs that we make when we see a sizable number of those ACBs disappear and want to retard as much as we can, the rest of them eroding away. But, and the bottom picture is, again, it's the ramp. It's on the bottom. It's the same thing. It's those, it's those little puzzle block ACBs. And for the most part, they're gone. Other pictures? And again, this is, and this is the last one to show you where the, where the slope failure is, and also some of the damage that's been done by the ice and the tides, and occasionally a non-careful boater tearing up some of what's, some of what's happening out here. And I kind of wish when stuff like that happens, that people will do this courtesy of giving us a call. But we tend to find these things out when we go down there and find it for ourselves. So anyway, here, you know, here are some pictures of what it is where, you know, we need to mitigate or needs to be mitigated if there's a desire to keep this place even open. So, you know, the questions that the port has is how, you know, how does the municipality want to proceed? Whose responsibility really is the Ship Creek Small Boat Launch? It is not in the wheelhouse of the port. It's been given to us because we're in the neighborhood and on the water, not because there was a business-related nexus between what's going on there and what's going on at the port. And so I just put these few questions out there. You know, if the municipality wants to retain responsibility for the, for the, for the small boat launch, then which department ought to have it? Yeah. And in, and in that case, or in any case, at the, you know, at the very least, if the municipality has responsibility of, of doing this, it's, something's got to be done about putting back in place a lease that has expired before anybody, including us, could spend a single dime there. And, and again, if you're, you know, if this is going to get pinned on the port to do, then I know my only choice for where the revenue is going to come from to maintain this thing. And we just need to inform the users that they're, that they're subsidizing a facility that they have no beneficial use of. And, you know, Mr. Chair, that concludes the slide presentation I have. So let me stop sharing to prep for the next guy. And I am now subject to, to any questions folks might have.
Okay. Kevin, if you want to get one in real quick, I'm just going to point out, we're already eight minutes.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I can always, I can always just call Steve and have a conversation. My conversation is about, well, I just want to know if there are any other places that we could, that are more economically feasible, easier to maintain. Have we identified anything else? Or if we're just, you know, struggling with this? I don't know if there's been any, any thoughts about another location for a boat launch. Thank you.
So I'm just going to ask that we kind of leave that as a rhetorical question right now, but certainly an important one. And I think, Kevin, yeah, I would like to have that conversation as well. So let's just find an opportunity to do so here in the near future. Because yeah, we, we need to talk about alternatives. So sorry to, to cut it short there. But let's just kind of jump on to the, the next item, just to make sure we get through everything.
Hey, good morning, assembly members. My name is Eric Adams. I'm the Jacobs Program Manager for the Port of Block Commoditization Program. And I'll try and make sure we make up time here going forward. I don't believe any of these will be on your November 21st meeting. The AMs aren't developed yet, but they will be on your December 5th meeting to discuss. So with that, I'll go through them and ask any questions, please, if you have any. Thank you. So starting cord, the first one is environmental site assessment. We're asking for a change order to Shannon Wilson's contract that we have. The first phase of it was an ESA desktop study completed. Phase two, we advanced soil boring to test for POLs. We did not find any above the ADEC cleanup levels. That's positive news. But the next phase of that, there's two items of it, is the building that Steve and I are currently sitting in, the admin, old admin building out on the dock, we need to confirm, need to complete a hazardous building materials assessment. Then also, we need to complete an environmental management plan if we run into contaminated soils during construction of T1. And Shannon Wilson is hired to complete that work for us if this change order is approved. So we submitted a recommendation award, has been provided to purchasing. The period of performance would be approximately eight weeks from NTP, so shortly after your December 5th meeting. The original contract value for the desktop study was $17,271. Change order one to advance phase two and do physical boring samples out on the port was $53,598. And the next phase to complete the hazardous building materials assessment, where they actually come out here and take physical samples of some items in the existing building. And the environmental management plan is expected to be $43,032. If this change order two is approved, total contract value would be $113,901. And that will wrap up the assessments needed to advance the T1 construction contract going forward and make sure everything's covered. Do we have any questions on the ESA Shannon Wilson change order two? Again, that should be on your December 5th meeting. Next one is probably the most exciting one we have on the list today. Independent cost estimating services for the cargo docks. And that is to respond to some questions from the assembly, I think back in July of this year. So we went out and contracted a third party to perform into independent cost estimate services for cargo terminals T1 and T2. We released an RFP on October 17th, 2023. We received two proposals on that RFP, and it was evaluated by a committee of five members. Recommendation award has been provided to purchasing from MOA Legal. Actually, that should be from us. I apologize. The recommendation award is from Kelly McNutt Consulting. Period of performance is from NTP shortly after the December 5th meeting to end of March 2024. And the scope of services is we're going to provide a cost estimate on the 65% design for Terminal 1. And then on Terminal 2, we're going to have two past estimates provided to us. One for the 69-foot wide wharf, and then one for the 120-foot wide wharf. And so that is one of the questions, I think, a member Zalatell asked us to provide that information. And this contract would allow us to gather that information from a third-party source. And that contract value is $148,980. And I might have misspoke. Actually, I don't think this has to be an AM since it's under the $150,000 contract limit. But I want to make you guys aware of it. There's a question the assembly asked for us to provide in July. We're getting the information, so you guys can move forward on a decision on T2 on the width of 69 versus 120. Any questions on that one?
Just real quick, just to, to make sure that I'm making the correct assumption here. What you're saying is that we will have that, that cost estimate in hand, March of '24. That's when we should expect the, the final product that we, that'll tell us what we, we think the cost will be?
For T2, correct. So T1, so T1, we're going to have a Class II AFM estimate delivered to us on February 6. And T2, the plan is to have that estimate delivered to us final March 1 of 2024, with the two options of the 69-foot wharf and the 120-foot wide wharf. I do know that shortly I do, we will have some additional costs coming in to compare those against. And I think the plan is to share that with the assembly coming up in the next month or two. But this is a third party outside the program that's coming in to look at it to provide those accurate costs.
Okay, thanks, Eric. I don't, it does. Yeah, thanks. I don't see anyone else raising their hands. So I guess we can move on to the next part. And I'll ask Steve if you're still here, maybe hang out, since it looks like we might get through the agenda faster than anticipated. And if there is time at the end, I'd love it if we could actually answer Mr. Cross's question. But with that, Eric, do you want to jump onto your, your next presentation?
Yep. And so here's the admin building. I invite all the assembly members on Steve's behalf, and the administration staff to come down and turn, if you guys want, reach out to Steve, and I would be more than happy to walk you guys through it. The building is up, and we actually only have one window left to install. So progress continues well, despite some contaminated soils and debris we ran into making the final connection to the Awu water line. So initial contingency change order authority will be more than extinguished by the debris excavation, removal and disposal costs of contaminated soils and water that we ran into in September and October of this year. So we are requesting additional change order authority to cover the above changes beyond the original contingency levels. I'll walk through what that looks like, hit some of the photos. You can see some of these large rocks. They're buried right next to the Awu water line where we had to tie into. We ran into contaminated soils. We ran into contaminated water. We had to have nine of these 30,000-gallon tanks that we've had to hold the water in. We did submit a plan of disposal to ADEC. They approved it. The tanks have been drained by the, by the contractor per the ADEC-approved plan. And we're getting ready to move those nine tanks offsite shortly. The contaminated soils, due to the snow and all that, have recently been stockpiled behind some snow removal areas. And so they're going to remain onsite, and the port is going to actually take ownership of some of those contaminated soils, and will dispose of them next year. But this is the last below-ground work that we've had to do for the admin building. And so everything else will be above ground. So kind of just run through the contract summaries for everybody. The initial base contract was $8,266,000. We've had a number of change orders. One of the larger ones, $580,000, was for debris and contaminated soil underneath the building. This one here, we are asking for a change order authority increase of $710,000, which should give us a total remaining change order authority of 1.2 million approximately. However, we are in negotiations with the contractor. And once those are settled, that 710,000 would disappear to deal with the contaminated soils we have. And we'd have just slightly over 500,000 remaining in change over, change order authority. And I believe this AM will be on the Assembly December 5th meeting. And then I just want to give a quick, this wasn't on the agenda, just you guys can have it, quick update Terminal 1. Designer of record is completing 65% design. We'll have that the end of this week. We had an industry day held on October 17th, and we did port tours on October 18th. Great turnout. We had 14 contractors and approximately 40 people in attendance. Really positive message from the contracting community. So I think the T1 contract is going to be a hit. Next steps for the T1 construction is we're going to release a pre-qualification package for construction contractors to be released in December of this year. And that's going to pre-qualify the contractors who are going to be able to bid on the T1 contract. We're going to complete the T1 issued for construction drawings, March 2024. Once that complete, the pre-qualified bidders will be able to bid on the package in March. And the notice to proceed for T1 construction is targeted for October 2024. And with that, does anybody have any questions?
So just a quick one. So just to, again, make sure that my assumptions are correct. When we're looking at the change orders for construction of the admin building, this is kind of the last big open question, right? I mean, or I understand that there may be unforeseeable things, but we're not anticipating additional change orders coming after this one. We're, we're close enough to the finish line that we think this is going to be it?
Yeah, we are, we're above ground. Everything is paved. We're no more digging into contaminated soils or anything like that. We've actually put sheet rock on the third floor. It's not all the way completed, and we're adding sheet rock to the second floor. All the trades are working inside. We have one window left to install. And so this is all, as of now, unforeseen site conditions that were below ground that we did not know about.
Okay, thank you. I'm not seeing any hands up, but I guess I'll just make one last call. Any questions on Pamp related projects? Not seeing anything. So thank you, Mr. Adams. Go ahead.
No, I, Mr. Chair, this is Steve Ruffo. I just wanted to let you know that Wi-Fi went down at the port. So that's why I've lost my team's connection, but I phoned in. So I'm sitting here on the phone.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Appreciate you being back. I don't know if you were off when I stated that if we get through the agenda ahead of schedule, I'd like to maybe circle back to the Small Boat Launch. So if you don't mind hanging out, that'd be great.
Nope, that's it. That's about the time I got back on.
Okay, all right. All right. Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Adams. And with that, I think we'll move on to the instrument flight procedure project. Who's presenting there?
Hi, Mr. Johnson. This is Colby Hickel, Deputy Municipal Manager and Acting Merrill Field Airport Manager. I have a few slides I'd like to share with the group. And I will get those up now. And let me know, can you see that, sir?
I can. Thank you.
Okay. So with me today, I've got Dan Owens with Alaska Air Transit, and current MAC member. I have Keenan Circle, owner of Alaska Aircraft Sales and Maintenance and MAC co-chair. And then on the line are the subject matter experts, Hughes Aerospace, to discuss this project. And I would like to address a few things. There is a perception within the community and some members that Merrill Field did not adequately involve the public, specifically the Fairview Community Council during this process. We do acknowledge that there were gaps in communication. However, Merrill Field did discuss these IFPs frequently during the MAC meetings, beginning in 2020 through now. The Fairview Community Council was present during most of these meetings, to get an opportunity to speak. And members were supportive of the safe, of this safety enhancement until rightfully so about five weeks ago, when they were presented with information that was false. And the reason that it became concerning to these community members is because a previous airport manager and others during their October 2023 meeting presented graphics that incorrectly displayed the runway protection zone specifically to the helicopter approach as going over these community members' homes. And it's been determined by the FAA, which they've provided written communication to the Fairview Community Council and to the administration and some assembly members, that Mr. Sewell and HDL did in fact misinterpret the FAA guidelines, and that the graphic that they displayed of this community member was incorrect. And we have since then provided updated corrected graphics showing these RPZs will not change as a result of publishing any copter approach. Or, and the helicopter approach is for the medevac purposes. So it is a very vital project for the community and the state as a whole. Additionally, Hughes Aerospace followed all guidelines when it came to NEPA and belonged to FAA. And they submitted that data to the FAA for review. And it's been determined that this particular project fell within the guidelines for categorical exclusions, or CATX, which is standard for this type of project. And during this process of the CATX, they analyzed for any potential or extraordinary circumstances that would require a more detailed NEPA review. And the FAA determined that these IFPs did not meet that criteria, which is why we got the CATX. Additionally, some of the main concerns that Mr. Sewell falsely presented was the size of aircraft could land at Merrill Field would increase. And quite frankly, that's not true. We would have to change Muni code, and that would be code 11.60.120, Section B of our code. And that will require an extensive public process and assembly change. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Dan Owen to discuss the IFPs in more detail.
Mr. Johnson, I think I've met you over the phone. And if I recall, you have familiarity with aviation. You own yourself, and you even have an estimate rating. Is that correct?
Correct.
Is there anybody else on the call that is not familiar with these concepts?
I think it's safe to say that not everybody here is going to be familiar with, with how this works. So if you just want to
Uh, I think it's safe to say that not everybody here is going to be familiar with, with how this works. So if you just want to. Quickly kind of walk us through sort of a, a, a presentation in Lehman's terms, so people can understand what, what we're actually talking about changing here.
Okay, that's fine. Um. So uh, I earned my first instrument rating 42 years ago in a Navy tactical jet and flying instruments ever since. Uh, instrument flight is how we. Navigate aircraft during uh inclement weather conditions to primarily to get back into an airport. This is what the instrument approaches are about. Merrill Field has an instrument approach. It's an older generation approach based on legacy GPS. Uh, it's a very imprecise um method of navigating compared to what's available now, what has been available since the mid 2000s, about 2006. Uh, with the advent of what's called WAS GPS. Now the slide you're looking at, um, uh, right now does to describe something about WAS. Essentially, in a nutshell, what WAS does, it, it improves increases uh precision and reliability. Of navigation, uh, and, and that translates into improved safety. And with regard to instrument approaches, uh, increased success rate. Uh, on instrument approaches where the aircraft can actually make it into an airport safely. Some of the concerns uh. That uh came up at the Fairview Community Council meeting that I, I zoomed in on. Uh, had to do with the ground tracks, the approaches. And the next slide, please. So uh, folks seem to be concerned about uh aircraft, uh, increased uh numbers of aircraft flying over their homes. And uh, this overlay, Google Earth overlay is designed to show you what the existing approach does, which is the dotted yellow line. And this is called a circling approach. What that means is this approach does not line up. With the runway. It comes in at an offset. And once you get the airport site, you're required to level off and maneuver at low altitude in order to align with the runway. There's an issue with that. And that's essentially that is an unstable, uh, just by definition, an unstable approach. Maneuvering at low altitude and poor weather uh has a. Lower safety margins, much lower safety margins. Than what you're going to see in the, uh, the new approaches, which are. Uh, the white dotted lines and those are called straight in approaches. They lead directly to a runway. And when you get to that point, there's no low altitude maneuver required. Uh, you just continue to fly a continuous descent to the runway. Uh, the other thing to show you out on this slide is that uh, on the surfing approach. Uh, quite often those aircraft dotted yellow line will be maneuvering right over Fairview. As they endeavor to line up with the runway. By contrast. These straight in approaches. Uh, extend out the runway center lines and they uh do not overfly Fairview residences. So. Uh, one of the approaches to runway seven, that's the one that's going from your left to right, uh, eastbound. Uh, on that final approach, the Fairview residences are south of the final approach course. The other approach coming off the bottom of the screen is a straight into the north. And that final approach, uh, the Fairview residence is off to the west side of the approach course. And so uh, at the Fairview Community Council meeting, one of the concerns that, uh, that I'd heard was. People concerned about these new approaches uh resulting in more aircraft flying over the homes. Well, actually the opposite is true. Airplanes, planes, approached tracks will not be flying over anybody's homes. All right, let's go to the next slide. So this is a pilot view of, of the straight in approach to runway seven. And uh, so we're, we've got the Sheridan on the left hand side, the runway's uh at the top of the screen right above us. Um, we're about a mile out, uh, and uh, on the. Right hand side, south of the track is the Fairview residences. So again, unlike the uh current approaches. Uh, these approaches do not overfly Fairview. Next slide, Cole. And this is the same for runway three, four, straight in approach. Um, landing to the north. In this case, the Fairview residences are uh off to the uh left on the west side of the approach course. Uh, one of the things I mentioned earlier about WAS GPS is that the navigation is very precise and that means that aircraft will be exactly on that line. They're not going to be deviating. Over your neighborhoods. Um, it's not only uh, not legal for us to fly instruments that way, it would be unsafe and we have instrumentation that. Uh, that will keep us from doing that. Let's um. Let's go to the next slide. Um, some of the concerns I heard at the uh community council meetings were this issue about the runway protection zone. Being expanded, uh, Colby already addressed that. That's just simply not true. And uh, and the second piece of that, besides the fact that it does not expand is. Uh, that in any case, neither Merrill Field nor the FAA has authority to take away your homes. There's some. Fear mongering about that. Uh, that's simply not going to happen. And uh, another concern is more planes flying over people's houses. I just addressed that. Actually, uh, planes flying on these approaches are not going to be going over people's houses. Um, and Colby addressed the fourth, uh, third concern, and that is large aircraft. Uh, code restricts aircraft to the size that are currently operating in Merrill Field. This will not bring in larger aircraft. Uh, and the last concern was that there'd be more airplanes flying in Merrill Field and that's not so either. All the airplanes, uh, nearly all the airplanes that fly instrument approaches in Merrill Field are. Commercial air carriers like myself who are home based there, returning home. We just want to be able to do that more safely and reliable. Just to back up uh for folks that uh. Aren't familiar with instrument approaches, let's go to the next slide. Probably most everybody's familiar with flying in Tancred International, Alaska Airlines or some other uh carrier. Um, they're going to be using a straight in approach. This is a depiction of a straight in approach. Now we're not in bad weather. Uh, wouldn't make any sense to do that because you wouldn't see anything but a white screen. But uh, in clear weather, this is what it looks like. Um. This aircraft is over Fire Island. Uh, it's about four miles on the final approach to runway seven at Anchorage International. Tick through these. As we get closer, two miles out, more. One mile out. And then short final runway seven. That's what most people are accustomed to. Let's go to the next slide, Colby. We'd like to be able to do that at Merrill Field and this is what that picture would look like for us. And in fact, uh, the new procedures will allow that. But what we have currently uh is this. It's called a circling approach. It lines us up, points us at the airport, but not aligned with any runway in particular. Uh, and uh, it leaves us generally too high and too close. To land on the nearest runway, which is runway seven, the eastbound runway. So at this point, if we break out of the clouds, we're required to maneuver to line up with runway for landing. That's what you see with that dotted line. Um, making a right turn over Fairview. To set itself up for a uh downwind uh pattern to land on runway two, five, opposite direction. Next slide. So coincidentally, in April of this year, the NTSB issued a safety alert about circling approaches. And uh, essentially the, the issue is that they require maneuvering at low altitude and poor weather. Uh, where there's a much higher risk of an aircraft losing control and impacting terrain. By the way, uh, that uh yellow highlighted thing in the bottom right corner of this slide there. Uh, this is true. Um, I, I also had 20 years as a major airline pilot. And uh, in that line of work, we were restricted, could not do certain approaches. Uh, in actual weather. We could only do them in visual conditions uh with high minimums. So. Uh, the airlines have determined that, that for a long time, they determined these were unsafe or not, not as safe, I should say. But besides the safety issue uh about certain approaches and uh what we have at Merrill Field. Um, is the reliability. Uh, now this access to the airport during inclement weather. Keenan took this photo of a, of a, one of my friendly competitors aircraft that had diverted to Lake Hood. Because they weren't able to land at Merrill Field, uh, because our instrument approach is a subpar compared to what's available now. So we had to go to Anchorage International uh and find approaches there and his aircraft just stuck over there covered in snow. Kind of about ready to summarize. So the, the benefit of the newest approaches is improved safety. Improved reliability of access uh to the airport. That access is primarily going to be for the local operators, uh, commercial operators and flights goes on occasion. Reduce the numbers of diversions we have and decrease our likelihood of having an accident. And directly to the benefit of the Fairview community is that these new approaches have flight tracks that actually keep them away from. Overflying the Fairview community. Are there any questions?
I'm not, go ahead.
All right. So I'll, I'll turn it over to Hughes Aerospace. Um, this is the company that Merrill Field contracted with. To develop these uh flight procedures for us. So they are the subject matter expert and I believe Elise or Chris or is on the line. If you could. Take over from here, that would be appreciated.
Okay, thanks. And I'll just say too, uh, we do have one more presentation after this, so um, I, I.
We'll go quickly.
You guys, but yeah, if we get this done about five minutes or so, that'd be great.
Thank you very much, Colby, and thank you everyone for inviting us to the meeting today. My name is Chris Bauer. I'm the President and CEO of Hughes Aerospace. And like Captain Owen, I'm also a pilot. Um, I've been flying for about 45 years, also military airlines and helicopters. That's a quick view of our team. Um, which makes it possible for us to perform all this work. Hughes is the largest. Air navigation service provider in the United States capable of producing. Public instrument flight procedures. We do everything that the FAA does. We do our own flight inspections, our own charting. Our own procedure development and maintenance. We performed our due diligence and developed these procedures at Merrill Field. We feel that these procedures, as well as the FAA, are environmentally safe, are documented as such. Uh, as Captain Owen had said, these procedures will make flying much safer at Merrill Field compared to what exists today. And it will make it environmentally friendlier than what exists today. Unfortunately, a false narrative was spread by the former airport manager. And that's what we're here to discuss with you today, so you understand the facts. If there's anything technical that I can answer for you with regard to these procedures. I am more than happy to do it. These procedures were ready to be published last spring. And we're eager to get them in the hands of the pilots. And make flying at Merrill Field safer and more environmentally friendly.
Thank you and very succinct, uh, Mr. Bauer. Any, any questions from uh the members? I, I'm not seeing any hands up. I will just say real quickly, as, as a pilot who spent a lot of time flying. Uh, out of Merrill Field and who attended the UAA Aviation College at Merrill Field and lived in the heart of Fairview for a number of years. Um, I see only upsides to this. I, I think that it has tremendous safety benefits and, and I don't think. Uh, the people in the neighborhood will notice any appreciable uh difference in terms of the, the amount of noise or disruption. Uh, from this change. So that, that's my take on it, but I do see we have a hand up. Uh, Grace Green, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Um, thank you to Colby and to Chris as well for this presentation. My name is Grace Green. I'm the CEO of Life Med Alaska. We're Alaska's largest and only Alaska owned medevac company. We have seven base locations throughout the state and fly well over 5,000 medevacs annually. We have two rotor base locations. One is up in the valley at Wolf Lake, the other in Soldana, and both our rotor locations routinely use approaches in and out of Merrill Field. Uh, Colby's presentation referenced the golden hour and I cannot stress enough how. Uh, a direct approach into Merrill Field would benefit patients throughout this state by. Reducing the amount of time that it takes to get in and out of Merrill Field. Additionally, safety is the number one most important thing for Life Med Alaska and as it was noted again in the presentation. Circling approaches are not preferred and, and the straight in approach uh would benefit. Our organization as well as the Alaskans and the patients that we serve by allowing for a very safe. Uh, approach in and out of Merrill Field, again with the added benefits uh to the community that are noted here as well. Um, Mr. Bauer, thanks for your comments as well. Hughes Aerospace is a highly reputable organization who does a lot of. Uh, really phenomenal work and represents the FAA. And so my, I have a very high level of confidence that this would be. Not only beneficial for the communities, but obviously for providers like Life Med Alaska and our pilots and our crew. Uh, to quickly get in and out of Merrill Field, um, to get the patients to the care that they need. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks. And I see a member of Braga has a question.
I had a question. Uh, the circling brought you heading west. Was that done initially because landing to the west is preferable? Um, I'm just curious as to why that circling happened. And then the other thing, um, in order to do the. The instrument, the IFR, is that the instrument panel landing? Sorry, I'm, do not fly. Is there a cost involved to uh get up to speed with the WAS? Um, and uh, you know, instead of the legacy and then will that? Have more people using instruments? Do you um anticipate?
Let me take that. The circling approach actually just gets you to the airport. We drew it to the west because that's the longest runway access, but they're not prohibited. They can land three, four, one, six, seven, or two, five, based on winds and conditions. Is to just try and get you down and then you're going to maneuver as required to the most favorable approach to the landing surface choose. The WAS technology is the highest standard and most cost efficient. One thing without getting too down in the, in the weeds, because we got to wrap this up. These approaches also give LPV, that's uh local path vertical guidance. It's the new standard. Uh, Conical Phillips is using it up on the slope. Uh, Northern Air Cargo is the first major carrier in the world allowed to use WAS approaches. They do a primary offer Alaska. This is the FAA's shining gold star and um, that's all that Hughes is trying to bring to Merrill Field.
Tack on to her last question about the cost. Uh, all the commercial operators on Merrill Field, IFR operators are already equipped with the technology to do this. We've been doing it all over the state. Rural areas, we just not have been able to do it at our home base in Anchorage. Actually, one more thing. Grace, uh, Grace, uh, this didn't come out necessarily, but I want to make sure everybody understands that a, an approach, a copter approach from Merrill Field. Is an approach to the hospital. As opposed to landing and transferring to a land ambulance and a bribe to the hospital.
That's correct. I had one more quick question. Would this runway change in any way affect um the use of Northway Mall? I have heard some rumors that. Um, some shelter may be in the works for that area.
No, it, it will not affect the surrounding areas as far as the use, the intended use for Northway Mall.
Okay, thanks. I uh, I think then I appreciate everyone um. Their, uh, their, their presentation there. Well, let's go ahead and move on to the uh last item on the agenda.
Hi, Tiffany Briggs, Real Estate Director. Um, I will keep it brief, but let me know if there's anything specifically you want me to touch on. I know there had been some questions on the CEA easement. Uh, regarding the Parks and Rec Commission recommendations. And almost immediately after the Parks and Rec Commission passed their resolution. Um, there was an agreement between Parks and Rec and um Chugatch Electric that they entered into that covered. All but one of those items. So um, you know, typically we don't include those in our ordinances. I do think that they. Um, went about it in the appropriate way and had a separate agreement addressing how they were going to um handle those items. We did ask um. Chugatch if they would be willing to, um, the easement document itself comes from Chugatch Electric. So we asked them if um. They would be able to add um number seven, which just had some. I think it was kind of a indemnity clauses, but we haven't heard back, but regardless, I think we could also just amend the agreement between. Um, Chugatch and Parks and Rec to make sure that everything's covered. Um, but at this time, we don't see any uh major outstanding issues with that. And then I did see in the um packet that went out that there was an amendment. I think Karen has her hand up, so.
Yeah, I guess uh, this might be a good opportunity for uh, for Member Braga to, to speak to her amendment.
Yeah, so I was just jumping in on the amendment. Um, and I don't know if you had a chance to look at it, Tiffany.
I did.
I know Ann Helsor, uh, well, she, she put a lot of work into looking it over as well and has um done a few amendments. My concern. My concern with it is that, that the reason that I worked on the amendment is that conveying the charter doesn't make any value on parkland as to whether or not, okay, this is only this much value, so we can give it away. So we wanted to make sure that popular vote is required for parkland. But in this particular instance, it's really clear that these easements should be granted based on the history of the area. But we wanted it amended, that we weren't going into this agreement based on this parkland was not as valuable or that there was any other reason that the power company was more important than the park. Boy, I'm fumbling around in this. So anyway, I think Chugatch Electric was going to come to the meeting as well. And I know that they've looked at the amendment, and I didn't know if they we just wanted to take out the part that talks about how we don't need to go to a vote for certain reasons. The reason that we don't need to bring this to a vote is because you have clear right-of-way from historic transfers of the land. So I don't know if Chugatch Electric wants to speak to it at all, or if they're here.
Matthew Clarkson, go ahead.
Sure, thanks, Karen. This is Matt Clarkson. I'm the general counsel over at Chugatch Electric. So I did get to see a quick draft of the amendment. It sounds like, based on that language, the municipality is taking the position that the right-of-way exists, the easement exists, and you don't feel that you're conveying anything that doesn't already exist. So I think to probably simplify that, to your point, if this is the resolution that's going to go out, we could send over a simple form of easement just to, so that we can go record it, make sure it's clear in the record. This is what the municipality believes exists. This is what Chugatch believes exists, and that could resolve that. And then separately, we have that use agreement. There's one line in there which grants the municipality the right to use Chugatch's existing easement right-of-way where the transmission line exists. And there would just need to be one change in there that modifies language that references the need for an additional easement that's going to be conveyed from the municipality. But I think, I think using Chugatch's general form of easement and then that simple modification of the use agreement would get this done, if that's what you're thinking, Ms. Braga.
Yep, I think that that will cover it as long, you know, and it would be nice to see what your amendment have you looked at what Ann Helsner put together too? I don't know if that's publicly available. We could send that on to you as well.
That'd be great. I don't know if I've seen that document yet.
Okay.
Can I see Municipal Attorney Ann Helsner is here and just raised her hand? So Ms. Helsner, do you want to speak to it?
Hi, sure. I appreciate, this is Ann Helsner. I appreciate Assemblymember Braga sort of looping me into this. I just got something yesterday, and our department has looked it over. We did make some suggested changes. I just want to understand, this is something out for the future, correct? This is not on the current agenda, or was it introduced last time? Is it possible to answer that question?
I believe public hearing is on December 5th.
Okay, so my understanding of this is that we're essentially something that would normally be required to be evaluated by voters is not required under these circumstances. And I've made some suggested changes in your proposed amendment. I'd appreciate it if you would look at those and let us know what you think. And I can go on about it, but I don't know if we have time better to maybe look at those changes and let us know what you think.
I guess I'll say quickly, yeah, we are kind of running out of time here. Would there potentially be an opportunity for that conversation to happen between Member Braga and the other parties to perhaps come up with an S version? Just putting that as one possible path forward, potentially.
Sure, that would be great. And Assemblymember Braga, we can meet at some point, maybe today, to explain some of these changes. And then basically, some of them might be big, a lot of them are not. But I just appreciate the time to go over them with you. So I will sign off with that.
Thank you. I will definitely connect with you later.
Excellent, thanks. Anything else on this topic? Okay, great. So yeah, we still have four minutes left. I haven't seen anyone expressing interest in audience participation. So within this narrow window, Steve Rubuffo, do you have time to maybe address Member Cross's question from earlier?
If he wouldn't mind repeating it, because I think that's about the time we lost the Wi-Fi here.
Yeah, Steve Kevin Cross here. I was just wondering if there'd ever been, you know, a look at another location for a public access point rather than continuing with the struggles with this one. Thank you.
You know, not to my knowledge. The Ship Creek Small Boat Launch was created with the dirt that came out of the ground when the landfill in Eagle River was created. And they were looking for something to do with it. And somebody concocted the idea that a small boat launch in the Ship Creek area would be a good idea, and they built the place. So I really don't think anywhere else was ever given any thought that we could go back and relook at. But Colby may have some backstory on that.
Yeah, okay, Ms. Seckel, your hand up. Do you want to speak to that?
Hi, Mr. Johnson. I was, had my hand up for a different reason. As far as the small boat launch, I don't have any additional information to provide. This Steve has not provided already. But if the questions are done for Steve, I would like to just make one more point about the IFPs and specifically the helicopter approach, if I could.
I guess I'll ask, Member Cross, is that answer satisfactory for you?
Yeah, just out of interest, I'll research some options on our side. I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, great, thanks. Yeah, Ms. Seckel, go ahead.
Sorry, so I would just like, okay, I'll make it quick. I would just like to reiterate that this helicopter approach is, in fact, the only helicopter approach, or Merrill Field is the only airport in Alaska that has an airport or a hospital directly linked to the airport. So that's why it makes it such a vital asset for the entire state and for patient survivability, because we can get them right to the emergency room and into services far quickly, far more quickly than having to defer to either MATSU or regional, MATSU Regional or International, and then put into an ambulance and cart it over. So please take that into consideration as well.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we got one minute left. Any last minute questions? No, I guess with that, thank you, everyone, for being quick and adaptive. And oh, gosh, okay, did a hand just go up?
Oh, sorry, this is the Kenan Circle. I was working with the Mac Chair, Stormy Jarvis, Assemblyman Boland, and some of a constant after the FCC meeting. And we wanted to have one more public meeting to discuss all this. Is this that meeting, or do we have yet another one to go? I just want to figure out how many more meetings we need to plan on having.
That's a good question that I don't think I can answer right here, right now. I would encourage you to maybe ask those members if this satisfies that requirements for the administration. Maybe we can follow up the emails if we have to make a determination there. But it's 12:00 PM. This is the time allotted for this meeting. So again, just thank you, everyone, for being here, participating. Thanks for being flexible and then working quickly against the clock. So with that, we are adjourned.